Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on our agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Kent?
Here.
Chair Wadi?
Here.
Thank you. That brings us to item three on our agenda. That is ex parte communications. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications that they would like to disclose?
Nope.
Nope.
Seeing none, onto item four on our agenda. Item four is the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted on by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the commission. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the commission or a member of the audience requests removal of one of the items from the consent calendar. First up is item 4-1, Planning Application 19038, Design Review and Parking Reduction for a Single Story Addition at 530 Cornell Avenue. And it looks like that is on our consent calendar. Do we not have minutes on our consent calendar?
No, unfortunately, we didn't get the minutes back on time, so it's just...
Got it. Okay, great. So we only have one item on the consent calendar. Are there any commissioners or members of the public who wish to pull item 4-1 for 530 Cornell off the consent?
Nope.
Nope.
Seeing none?
Seeing none. I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
All right.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no opposition, item 4-1 has been approved. And please note, there is a 14-day appeal period for the applicants of 530 Cornell Avenue, but otherwise, that item has now been approved. That takes us on to item five on the agenda, which is general public comment. Public comment, this is for persons desiring to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers who would like to speak on general public comment? Nope. All right. Seeing none, we'll keep moving along here. Move on to item six on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action on the following items. First item, 6-1, Planning Application 19-037. This is a design review and variance for a new two-story single-family home at 1198 Curtis Street. Do we have a presentation, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Commission, members of the public. Before you tonight, once again, is design review and variance for a new two-story home at 1198 Curtis. Some background on the property, the subject property is a 8,176 square foot vacant lot located in the R1 zoning district with a water course overlay. The subject property was subdivided from the adjacent property at 1196 Curtis in 2010. The subsequent parcel was sold in 2013. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a study session in 2016, though the project approvals were never granted. The current property owner purchased the property in May of this year. One important note is during the study session at the 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the applicant had proposed a single-family home with a portion of the home cantilevering into the required creek setback area, and thus applied for a conditional use permit. At that time, the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time expressed greater support for a variance to reduce the rear yard setback rather than to allow encroachment into the setback area. And that's just to keep in mind as we go forward. Here's this review of the property as it sits today. It's hard to see, sorry, apologies for the shadow, but there is the curb cut there. There's also an access easement in the approximate location just above the curb cut. And project requests. Before you tonight, the applicant is seeking design review for a new two-story, single-family home. They are also requesting a variance to allow a reduced rear yard setback from 20 feet to 12 feet. This would result in a new four-bedroom, 3.5 bathroom, 2,301 square foot, two-story home with a maximum height of 28 feet. And here's the proposed elevation before you tonight. And the applicant has provided 3D renderings. This is from the street front, what the building would look like. And then, front left view, rear left view, right, front right view, rear right view. With regards to parking, the proposed home is proposed to include a driveway pad to accommodate two off-street parking spaces in a side-by-side configuration. The applicant is proposing to comply with Albany's off-street parking requirements for single-family homes. Overlay District Regulations. The Water Course Overlay District Regulations date back to at least 1978, where they existed with the same language which is contained in the code before you today. The Albany Creek Restoration Report also dates back to 1978. Staff was not able to locate a copy of the document. This project is required to comply with FEMA requirements with regard to the flood zones. In other similar projects, the city requires a submittal of a flood elevation certificate prepared and stamped by a licensed civil engineer. Going deeper into the specifics of the Water Course Overlay, the subject property is, once again, located in the R1 with a water course overlay. Within Section 2024030G1, the code requires that all structures shall not be located closer than 20 feet from the "top of natural creek bank." The applicant is proposing to comply with this specific provision. No construction is proposed in this required setback area. Additionally, Section 2024030G3 of the zoning code states that new construction and structures located in the zoning overlay shall follow regulations contained in Section 2052. And this is just a snapshot of the code taken from the website showing provision G1 and G3, which are applied to this. G2, once again, staff cannot locate the Albany Creek Restoration Report as it dates back to 1978. And then, within Chapter 2052, the Flood Damage Prevention Regulation Chapter, Section 2052060A3A1, Residential Construction or New Substantial Improvements Shall Have the Lowest Floor, Including the Basement, in an AO Zone, which this property is located, elevated at least three feet, at least one foot, sorry, elevated above the highest adjacent grade, exceeding the depth number specified on the firm map, which is the flood insurance rate map indicated on the FEMA website, or elevated three feet above the highest adjacent grade if no depth number is specified. Staff has confirmed that a three feet is the minimum height that the lowest floor of the proposed home is required to be elevated. The applicant is proposing to comply with this code provision as well. And then here's just a snapshot of the elevation showing the floor three feet above grade. And then, also, the firm map, this is from FEMA's website, may be hard to read, but it says Zone AO with a depth of two feet for the flood plain, and the red cursor indicates the subject property. Variance. The subject property is restricted with a five-foot rear yard storm drain easement in addition to a private access easement, and also the additional setback requirement of 20 feet from the top of creek bank, as the Water Course Overlay District dictates. Due to the myriad of regulations on the subject site, the applicant is seeking a variance from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant is proposing a 12-foot rear yard setback for their home, where 20 feet is typically required in the R1 zoning district. And then here's just a snapshot of the site survey. The orange highlighted portion indicates the subject property lot, and the blue highlighted portion shows actual buildable area with strict compliance with the zoning code. So you'll notice this hash line here is the approximate 20-foot setback from the creek, top of creek bank. And then, this is what a 20-foot rear yard setback would look like, or how it would define the buildable area in addition to the required access easement along the parking pad right here, which kind of bisects this area. Variances are typically challenging to process as they have a very strict criteria and must satisfy and recognize that there are unique site characteristics, the preservation of property rights, no grant of special privilege, no adverse impacts, and other limitations. Section 201040 of the Albany Municipal Code specifies these findings, these six findings, that are needed to grant a variance. These findings were outlined and described in detail in the staff report. And with that, no correspondences have been received for this project. The project is considered categorically exempt from CEQA review per Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review and approve the proposed project, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. And we're happy to answer any questions, and I see the project architect in the audience as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff?
I got a couple of questions. I think it was just a typo, but a terminology, maybe I'm just lost on it. So the subject properties are restricted with a five-foot rear-year storm drain? That means rear yard storm drain?
So currently, the subject parcel has an easement in the rear yard. That's a five-foot storm easement, yeah.
It's written as rear year, so that was...
Oh, sorry. Yeah, maybe a typo.
And the other thing was, on the topo, there's really no elevations shown. And so I was wondering how the top of creek was determined.
That's a good question. I might defer that to the applicant. I believe this survey was obtained by the previous property owner.
Any other questions? That's it? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and...
Sorry, I do have questions.
Okay, you do have questions, okay.
Yeah. So, well, I guess, and we'll ask the applicant about the setback from the creek as well, and how that top of bank was determined. But I know, we recently had another application for a project that's also in the Water Course Overlay Zone, and there was extensive discussion among the commission and staff in that case about how the top of bank was determined, and, you know, where it's appropriate to measure from, what goes into that determination, because there isn't really a lot of guidance in the existing code. And unfortunately, that mystery document from the '70s has never turned up. But I guess, generally speaking, just wanted to talk a little bit more about how that has been applied here, and making sure that we're taking a consistent view of it. And so I guess, is it staff's view that the interpretation of the top of bank here is consistent with how we've been addressing it, and that other recent project, and other applications that may have come forward on the Water Course Overlay District recently?
I can help answer the question. I'm not familiar with this particular application, so with respect to this application. But generally, the concept of top of bank is either one that you can physically see, in some cases where there's a sharp delineation between the channel where the water goes and the ground surface above where the water is. And there's usually a little bit of a shape to that channel, and you can obviously see where the top of bank is. But as a practical matter, my understanding, and different agencies have slightly different definitions, but it's basically where the water, the high-water mark gets, and in, depending on the agency, either in a normal high-water situation or in an extreme water situation. And I think we're, you know, hopefully, again, I'm sorry, my familiarity with this project takes back many years. But I think, usually, it can be spotted in the field by an engineer or a surveyor can make a determination of that. I don't know if there's something in this particular case where it was just obvious to everyone visually where it is.
For what it's worth, I'll say, I did go out and walk the site, and I found the stakes that were shown on the map, and could see that. And I thought that this was pretty, that they'd measured pretty conservatively compared to the application we had the last time, where there was a bench down low. You know, creeks have, you know, two-year storms have sort of a bench, and then a 10-year storm roughly has another bench, and then a 100-year storm might have another, 500-year might have another. But the previous application we had, they were measuring, you know, kind of aggressively, like at the second bench down below, saying that was the top of the natural bank, and we had questions about that. In this case, it looks to me like they're measuring pretty much at the top, measuring from pretty much where the ground, where the angle breaks and the flat part of the site, relatively flat part of the site starts. So I was satisfied with it from my field investigation, anyway.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
That's helpful. And then, I just wanted to confirm, I think this is the case, but is it correct that the 20-foot setback from the top of bank, it doesn't apply to, like, decks and fences, right? It's just the main building area?
Correct. When we look at setbacks, we're looking at the walls of actual dwellings, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? With that, we'll turn it to the applicant, if you'd like to give a brief presentation.
Christopher did a pretty good job, pretty much giving a summary of the proposal. Of course, he mentioned that it's a very constrained, triangular, odd-shaped site, has a gracious 20-foot rear setback. Of course, we're asking to hopefully get some reduction. We've, you know, the challenge on the rear was, well, one thing that is advantageous is the existing landscaping that's there along the property line that we'll retain. And then the other thing that I was sensitive to was the stepping back the facade as the house, as the volume of the space moves up, as much as I could. And on that rear wall line, what I tried to do was to create, you know, kind of a, not just a double-height wall, but to recess at least part of it. So if we have a, if you want to put the image to the rear...
Are you looking for the floor plan?
Yeah, the left rear view.
Elevation.
That one. Go forward.
Right there.
Actually, you can, yeah, that's good. So I tried to create, you know, a level of interest that would be pleasant to look at, and not just a wall. So that's going to be the approach. And if we have to push, right now, we're 12 feet away from the property line. So if we go further, it's going to, you know, compress, will compress, will make the already small bedrooms that we're doing. I guess we could, there's a possibility we could pull it back if we think that it's, you know, the 12 feet's not enough. I'd rather not. It's, I think the proportion of the interior spaces works well, and it's, you know, it's commodious. We have firmness commodity in delight, I think. And so, and then also landscaping on the site, we're proposing to, you know, provide screening, additional screening trees. And we don't have a, the other part, the applicant, or my client, they were at first looking to do a garage, but there's just not enough space. So that's why we have the no garage at all. So we're trying to do something that, you know, adds a value and provides not such, so cramped inside that it's, you know, it's a value. And then, material-wise, we're doing, as you described in the brief in the application, we have board and batten, wood, painted wood above a ship lap that's on the lower horizontal, and we have a water course trim all the way, pretty much all the way around to kind of further break up the facade with the textures. And then the roof, we're proposing, for any visible roof, is a nice durable standing seam to give it kind of a nice, modern look. Can't think of any, that's all I can think of at the moment. If you have any questions, let me know.
There's a row of existing trees along what would be the rear fence there. Would you think those are going to have to come out, or are you going to be able to save those? They're pretty tall, premature?
I think the ones along the back that are there on the left, those are existing. So we're going to be able to save, we're going to be able to keep those, because they're good and mature. And then, we could plant more trees, too, to create a landscape buffer to provide, you know, additional, you know, visual privacy, visual separation.
Now, the way the house is designed, what we call the backyard is kind of like, functionally, more like a side yard, is that right? Your living space will be, or the outdoor open space that'll be the most used is going to be on the side, sort of facing the creek. That's the way I read the plans, anyway.
Yes. Mr. Donaldson, I'm glad you brought that up. But I would, I think that, oh, this is, okay, I got it now. That's what I'm, okay. So, yeah, I think that you could be argued that, really, it's a three-sided lot. In that case, it has, you could, it could be argued, especially as you go along Curtis Street, you know, it's kind of like a side yard. For this lot. The house kind of faces the creek.
Right.
Yep. So just to close the loop on the discussion about the creek, could you talk a little bit about how you determined the top of bank for purposes of calculating the setback? I'm just curious what kind of process went into that?
So I didn't, I'm not a licensed surveyor, but, so I just used, I utilized the survey document to determine where the, you know, approximate top of bank was. We, you know, have our setbacks from that. It sounds like it was more conservative than the last, which is probably better from a liability standpoint, that if you're a little further away in a time where you might have flooding, then if you're off, then that could be not good for your career, to be off, to be lower than you're really supposed to be.
But so you just worked from what seemed to be the obvious break between the main grade and the bank?
Yeah. I deferred to the survey document.
Okay.
For the line. I didn't go out there and measure it. I just went with what was shown on the survey.
Fair enough.
Stamped "survey," so I just, I used that. I, you know, it looks like it was accurately done. I was at the site, you know, looking at the site. It looks like approximately where the site starts to drop off into the creek.
That's what I thought.
Okay, thanks.
Do you know what's in that five-foot drainage easement along the rear of the lot? You know, is there, are there pipes in there, or do you know?
I do not know. I haven't seen any plumbing survey. I don't know exactly what is the, is the...
Okay.
Probably, there probably is a storm drain in there.
Mm-hmm.
Probably the lateral, or any, well, there isn't a sewer lateral at this moment. So it's just for the storm drain.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, Kent, do you have any questions?
Yeah. So, yeah, I want to continue on this. So it's a five-foot private storm drain easement. So is that for the property? I mean, privately owned by the properties along the, that's confusing me. So it's not maintained by Ed Mudd or the city or anything like that? It's private?
I don't believe it's maintained by the city. The other properties adjacent, it doesn't, it's not like a utility easement that's, and it doesn't, from this survey, it doesn't appear to, it doesn't appear to, it's not shown to be carried into the, oddly enough, on this survey.
One reason I ask is, because if you're planning putting trees, is there some setback requirement on that? Is it still used? Probably is still draining something. It was put there for a reason.
I don't, there might be, there might be a culvert in the five-foot setback. I haven't noticed, I mean, one could, I could, it could be probably, if there was any kind of culvert that daylights into the bank of the creek, we could see what exactly that is. There is, there are currently trees right, right against the fence, the property line. So I think planting in that area is probably not going to hurt whatever is there.
Okay, so, so you're speaking to the landscape plan, and I know this is only 30% FAR, so it doesn't really require one. But being that it's adjacent to the creek, it's kind of a sensitive space. So I don't see a landscape plan, so I can't really respond to it, other than what you, how you describe it, and the SketchUp, whatever you use to simulate the three-dimensional, those are just, you know, plants you put on the plants. I don't really consider that a planting plan.
No, it's a, it's not the final planting. It's not a final representation of plant species that are intended.
So my concern is that you are right at the creek, and so you have to pay more attention than most to the species you're using, so they're not invading the creek and taking over. And I think if you follow the city's bay-friendly guidelines, and within those guidelines, they have, you know, creek-compatible planting. It's already part of the city code, you just have to make sure you focus in on it. So there are a lot of plants that are fine to plant, and upland areas or around the city, it doesn't harm anything. But when you're right on a creek, and you're planting it, and those seeds, whatever, just fall into the creek, they just take over. So it's an issue when you're planting right on the creek.
I think that's a good point, and we would want to consult the...
As far as the architecture, I like the building a bit. Well, I guess we'll get into that a little bit. All right, so that's all I have.
I just had one remaining question on the architecture. On the windows that are being proposed, what are the mutton details that are being contemplated? Are they sort of 3D architectural? Are you proposing flat grills? Because you have a lot of divided lights.
Any divided lights would be true divided lights, and then we would use, the windows we would, we were going to use were going to be aluminum clad, say comparable to Milgard, aluminum clad.
Like the aluminum clad wood windows, and then architectural series with spacer bars, that sort of thing?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. With that, we will now open it up for public comment. Are there any speakers here to speak on this item?
Yeah, we have two speaker cards. So first is Ari Soglin, and then next would be Suzanne Portnoy.
Hi, thank you. I live at 1196 Curtis Street, so...
Next door.
Residence to the right, as you're looking from the street. And so our home is closer to the street than this residence would be, whatever the setback is. And so, one of the comments I wanted to make is, one thing I noticed in the staff report is that the variance was characterized, the requested variance on the setback was characterized as modest. And I don't know if that's a legal term or not, but it didn't seem modest to me. And I don't know if that's significant in terms of this conversation or not, but I wanted to make that point. My only concern is really that if the variance is granted as requested, it will mean a greater impact on our rear yard, given the shadow that the structure would cast, than if it did not have the setback of 20 feet. How much of a difference that would make, you know, I don't know. And so that's just one issue I wanted to raise, and see if anyone would be able to address that. There were a couple other comments I wanted to make. One is, during the earlier conversation, there was a statement that the treatment of the creek setback is more conservative with this application, and that confuses me a little bit, because I didn't think that there was a newer survey done for this application. So I wonder if that could be addressed. And then finally, there were a couple other things that, in the documentation, that I also found a little bit confusing. There were some inconsistencies. There were some places where it referenced the height of the structure as being about 28 feet. And then, there was another place in the documentation, this is in the staff report on page 12, where it indicated the height of the structure would be about 25 and a half feet. So I'd like some clarification on that. And then similarly, most of the documentation refers to the structure being two stories, but on one of the front elevation drawings... but on one of the front elevation drawings, it indicates a third floor. So, again, I'd like to understand that a little bit better. And that's it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, let me, can I just say one thing right now to clarify, if I could?
Yes.
I'm sorry to confuse you. When I'm talking about conservative measurement of the top of the bank, I'm referring to another project we had a couple of months ago, or a month and a half ago, on, what was it, on Stanage or another, whole nother street, whole nother part of town, comparing their survey and their measurements of the creek bank with this one.
That clarifies. Thank you.
Okay, sorry to confuse you on that.
All right, next speaker?
Suzanne.
I'm Suzanne Portnoy. I live at 1196 Curtis Street. I used to live partially on this lot also, and I just wanted to start by saying that I appreciated the planning and zoning committee's support for me, when I tried to split the lot. And I did so, I think, without any variances. And I want to also appreciate the need to build homes in the Bay Area, and for the builder to recover the cost of building the property. Let's see, things I like about the project, I like that the house is set far back on the lot, and that the windows are facing the creek, and that it's in harmony with the shape of the lot. But I do ask the committee to consider denying the variance. It adds 500 square feet to the structure, and in exchange for giving up light, foliage, and space between neighbors. And that, to me, would be a fair trade if we were building two units, a duplex, or a building that had a low-income second unit. But to grant this variance in order to enlarge a single-family dwelling from 1,800 square feet to 2,300 square feet, it just seems woefully out of sync with our housing crisis. I work as a public health nurse, and I see homelessness everywhere, and of homelessness among people over 50. And I would like this committee to think about doing the right thing, and making our town a place where people with low income can buy, get a place to live. And so if we're going to do a 2,300-square-foot structure, let's make it a place that more people can live than one family. That's all. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this item?
Yes, we have a few more. The next up would be Cloud Chavez.
I also ask the committee to consider denying the variance. I have lived at 1191 Santa Fe Avenue, which is the lot behind 1198 Curtis, for almost four years. And I can attest to a richness of wildlife that exists in the area surrounding 1198 Curtis, as compared to where I lived previously, which is similar but is not near a creek. There is wildlife that thrives here as a result of the creek, I have, and because of the trees that surround the creek. I see daily skunks, baby turkey, grown turkey, fawns, deer, all kinds of insects, from dragonflies to spiders. It is like a rich wildlife area. This is a really special place. I consider it sort of a wildlife sanctuary that exists in an urban residential area. I also am very concerned about the trees that line the property between, that are on the perimeter behind the lot, that also share the backlot of 1191 and 1195 Santa Fe Avenue. I don't understand how those trees are going to be kept with only a 12-foot variance. These are mature trees that are 40 feet high, with the reach of over 12 feet from the fence line, and I don't see how with the construction that those trees would not be able to be cut down. These trees are part of the thriving habitat of the wildlife that I described. It's like they're bird condos. The trees also provide beauty and privacy, which are advantages for the homeowners and renters of the area. The owners of 1198 Curtis purchased the lot knowing and assuming the risk of the restrictions on the protected watershed, and now they're relaying the risk and disadvantage to the neighbors by not adhering to the setback requirement. I see this as the neighbors having to suffer the consequences of lack of privacy from possibly lost trees, and obstructed views from a house whose height exceeds the surrounding houses, which are modest houses. So, the neighbors in the modest houses will be losing the benefits of mature trees and vegetation. Also, they will be suffering a reduction of wildlife and wildlife habitat, and access to the eastern sunlight, in order to accommodate an extravagant house in a community of modest houses.
Your time is up. Thank you. Are there any additional speakers? Please come on up.
Yes, next one would be, sorry, Kathy Moreno?
No.
Is there a Kathy here?
I'm Kathy Moreno. I'm the owner of 1191 Santa Fe, and I'm just going to finish Cloud Chavez's remarks. Again, we encourage the zoning board, should be encouraging construction that promotes environmentally sound practices, and upholds requirements that have been established for valid reasons. The owners, again, assumed the risk. They knew about the watershed when they bought that, and now they're respecting that. I think they don't have any choice about that, but they're, they're trying to pass on, sorry, pass on the disadvantages of that to the people who are living behind, behind them. Those trees are way over 12 feet from the fence. There's no way that anybody's going to build a house right into the trees. It's just not going to happen. They're going to, they wouldn't even be able to build the house there. I mean, I don't know how anybody could get up on a ladder. Those are mature trees, like you said, and they're way more than 12 feet, the branches reaching out. We would request, if there is a variance, that it not be 12 feet, and that it be at least 16 feet. You know, you, the city of Albany here, I see it's an urban village by the bay, and that one of the requirements is no special privileges being given, but I think that here, there is a special privilege being given. The height, the square footage, the height, the footprint, it still impinges on the life of the wildlife, even though they're adhering to the creek setback, and it's just an impact on the environment as well as all of the neighbors. Sorry, I can't find my notes. I just want to say one more thing, and I can't find it, but, anyway. I just don't think that the owners, having bought a land with the creek there, knowing that there were all kind of environmental concerns, that the other neighbors should be made to suffer to lose their privacy, their, those variances are for a reason. They're to protect privacy, to protect property rights, and to protect the character of the neighborhood. And if this court grants that variance, I don't, I think they're giving special privilege to one at the expense of many others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker, Roberta.
Good evening. My name is Roberta Fuff, and I am the property owner at 1195 Santa Fe. My property is located behind the proposed development at 1198 Curtis. The proposed development on the vacant lot at 1198 Curtis is asking for a variance from 20 feet to 12. This should not be acceptable. Giving a variance will be infringing on a neighboring property's owner's right, use of enjoyment of our own land. You will change the spirit of the neighborhood, our quality of life. Zoning codes and building and planning ordinances exist for the good of the community. This is why there are ordinances set in place. There is absolutely no reason to discard this ordinance. A variance request will have a negative, will have a strong negative impact on my property and neighboring properties. You should not grant this variance. The proposed home is out of scale with the neighborhood extremely too large, especially by the Cordonesus Creek. Design review should meet the needs of our community, and to resist poorly designed schemes. Design review is intended to prevent these and other harmful effects of such overbuilding, and encourages the most appropriate development with our residential neighborhoods. I would ask that design review stay within the ordinance variance of 20 feet. Promote design that respects our neighbors, ensure adequate light, air, privacy, and open space for each dwelling. I know that this is going to be a hard sell, but please, don't take our way, our little privacy we deserve as property owners here in Albany. The variance should not be granted. And I had a, I have a question, or I know the answer, but I'm just wondering, were all the neighbors notified? That, are you aware of that?
Yeah.
Yes?
Public notices are sent to property owners within 300 foot.
That's not true, because the owner at 1197, who I know, and I went to his home one Sunday, did not get the notice. So, he is not, he's not aware. So, I would ask to postpone any approval until all the neighbors are notified. And I just, I just received a request in letting you know that the owners at 1196 Curtis, they had their child, their son was born there, and there is, the placenta is buried under the redwood trees over there. So, that might be something to consider also. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers? Oh, there is one? Okay, you can come on up and say your name into the...
Michael Weston.
Hello, I'm Michael Weston. I'm the resident at 1195 Santa Fe Avenue, directly behind this property. I'm a renter. These are my landlords, and I've lived there for 19 years with my wife and two children, who went through Albany schools, start to finish. I have two comments to make. One is, the house that we've raised our children in for 19 years now is about 1,000 square feet, or 1,100 square feet. And so, this is, you know, this is not a McMansion that's being proposed. Yet, what we live in, and what we've had for all these years, is typical of Albany. It's not a town known for, you know, enormous structures, for very large houses. The other thing I want to say is that we have kind of a special relationship with this property, in that about seven years ago, I talked to Suzanne, my wife and I talked to Suzanne when this property first became available, about my wife and I buying this property and building on it. And we looked at a house, we engaged an architect, we spent quite a bit of time with it. Ultimately, we decided that the math didn't work out for us, given the constraints of the property. The creek's talked about a lot, yes, the creek, but also zoning constraints. I have to say, you know, we made that decision, that the math didn't work for an 1,800-square-foot home on that property. I find myself in an unusual position right now, that someone else has come along, and with a certain sort of, I don't know if the word is guts or determination, has said, "No, no, no, we're, you know, we, we can't do it. It's the creek. We have to build something larger to make it all work out." It feels a little bit funny to me. And when I saw the wording in the agenda about how the variance is being sought because of the creek, I have to say it's a little upsetting, given that the board's neutral, of course, because the variance is not about the creek. It's really not. The variance is about the desire to build a larger home. An 1,800-square-foot home fits here with no meeting, no variance request to put before you. Just go ahead with the normal processes of planning, and getting the permits and construction. So, I'm sensitive to saying, "Oh, it's the creek, it's the creek, that's why we're all here today." It's not. It's just the desire to build a larger home. Anyway, thank you very much.
Can I just make one more comment about the trees, please?
If you've already spoken, your time is up.
You said my full time, so I had to...
I'm sorry, you've given your opportunity, but are there any other speakers that have not yet spoken? Okay, seeing none, the public comment is closed. And with that, we'll turn it back to the commission for deliberations. Are you going to want to jump into this?
Okay, all right, I'll start with a couple little points, then. Let's see, first of all, height of the building, there was comments about that, and I, too, looked at that. I think it does go up to 27 feet, 10 and a half inches on the plan, so approximately 28 feet. And the, the living space area, actually, and the whole living space area would be 25, 24-some feet, because it had, the whole building has to be raised up three feet to stay out of the, out of the 100-year flood plane. So, it starts with a three-foot, a three-foot penalty, in a way, to comply with the federal insurance rate map requirement, so. There was a question about that from one of the, from one of the neighbors about, so I think that's it. So, otherwise, probably I'll let other commissioners maybe talk on this a little bit. I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on it, frankly. I like the design quite a bit. I think that the architect has done a nice job designing a building that fits on a very unique site. I, I believe that practically speaking, that the, what we call the rear yard will become the, essentially the side yard of this home. It is on a triangular-shaped lot. I think we could make the variance findings because, not necessarily because of the creek, but because of the uniqueness of the lot, and the unique shape of the lot. We've done that on other places along Posen, where this, where we have homes with very awkward and strange backyards, side yards, and that sort of thing. And I think this would kind of fit within, within that, within that precedent, I guess, of decisions that we've made here, I've made here in the past. I am somewhat troubled about going all the way, all the way to 12 feet. Even if that is, if I, if I say that's the side yard, then it's a good side yard, and that's ample, and it works. But it's a side yard that is also a rear yard to the neighbors on Santa Fe, and we've heard plenty of testimony about that tonight. And I could see that when I was out doing a site visit. I could, I could hear children playing in the backyards of several of those homes, and I could really see that that, that, functionally speaking, from the Santa Fe side, that is a backyard. And, and according to that, then a 20-foot setback would be appropriate. So, should the, should we require the building to be shaved off and made smaller to go to 20 feet, instead of going out to 12? I'm, I, I don't know how I stand on that. A 2,300-square-foot home is not all that big in Albany, and certainly we have many more home additions we've been approving in the past few years that have been much larger than that. The floor area ratio is low, the lot coverage is low. It's a unique, and actually very large, lot. And so, a 2,300-square-foot home on a lot of this size would be, would, I say, you could even say, even use the word, almost use the word modest for it. An 1,800-foot home might argue, might well fit within that very small building area, but the surveyor has shown us what the building area is, and it really is very small. There's no, and small, and not square, and very awkward. So, I'm certain that I could support some variance, whether it's a 12-foot variance or a 14-foot variance, that's where I, 16-foot, that's where I'm all, that's where I have hesitation. And, so, another thought is, so if we, if we let them go to 12 feet, or if we don't let them go to 12 feet, and we make them pull back to 16 feet, what's gained? Not a... Not a lot, is my thinking. The trees that are along the back fence are, the trunks of the trees are right on the fence. I could see that. They're right on the fence line. They are tall trees, they are mature, they do provide good screening, very good screening, really. And I'm confident that they can be preserved, and we could condition it to require that they be preserved, which would certainly reduce any visual, or very much reduce the visual impacts of the project on the, to, as far as experienced by the neighbors on Santa Fe. There have been, we've had questions about shading the backyard of the neighbors to the north. That's a concern, but it's not something that we normally, we normally address. We're not sensitive to that. We have home, we have homes all the time that get expanded and built up in Albany, and as long as they're within the zoning envelope, they might indeed either shade people's backyards, or shade their gardens, or shade their front yards, or provide windows that look into other windows. We have that problem all the time. And our, our bias in every case is to let the new construction go forward. We like, we like to see that. We like to see people investing in our community and building new buildings. We have very few vacant lots left, and having a whole new structure on a vacant lot probably requires some different kind of thinking. So, anyway, I'm interested in what other commissioners would say. I, I don't know whether I can go with 12 feet, or whether I would have to say, "No, we'd better, we'd better pull that back some." Those are my thoughts, anyway, starting out.
Yeah, I can go. Yeah, I think I generally agree with Commissioner Donaldson's view of things. I mean, I think the issue here is, it is clearly a unique shaped lot, and it has constraints that other, you know, similar, certainly other similarly sized lots may not, and other lots in the neighborhood may not. And so I think, you know, just looking at the lot itself, and not even thinking about the creek necessarily, it's the kind of lot that it, it's not uncommon to see variance requests for. That said, you know, I, I think, well, I'll go through my notes here. With respect to privacy, you know, this is something that comes up a lot for projects in Albany, where we do live in a very dense urban environment. We have a lot of small homes and people who want to add to their homes, and we do, we are close quarters with each other. I don't think that 12-foot setback from the rear yard here necessarily creates an unreasonable invasion of, of privacy relative to what, you know, we all deal with in our, in our own neighborhoods. And I also think, yes, the, the project is bigger than a lot of the surrounding existing homes, but is it bigger than what you could build on your lots? I don't think it is. I think that, you know, just applying the floor area ratio and lot coverage rules that, that again, everyone is subject to, that it's entirely possible that others could, you know, build similarly sized houses. And as Commissioner Donaldson said, we've, you know, we're just seeing more and more larger additions come forward that do comply with coverage and floor area ratio. And so, yes, it's, it's larger for the, the neighborhood, but I don't think it's, it's not obscenely large. I also think that there is support in the, the record and the materials we were provided to support certainly most and maybe all of the findings that we would be asked to make for a variance. The one thing that I am a little bit stuck on is that I think there, there is a sort of a principle when you're asking for a variance that, this isn't really stated explicitly in our findings, but I think it is a principle that generally applies, that you should ask for the least variance that you really need to accomplish your, your goals for the project. And that's the one thing that I am a little hung up on. Does this need to be a, you know, a 2,300 square foot house, or do you need to have just a 12-foot setback in order to accomplish the, the program for this project and in order to, you know, preserve the, the property rights, et cetera? I just, I don't know. Maybe you do, but I don't think that piece of it has really been explained to us or justified. And so, I guess to, to cut to the chase, where I'm kind of headed on this is, I think I personally would be most comfortable continuing this application and asking the applicant to go back, think about it some more, think about the specific request, and if you come to the conclusion that yes, this really is the minimum variance that you, you need to request for this site, explain to us why. Because, you know, as Commissioner Donaldson said, we might be more comfortable, and the neighbors might be more comfortable with something that even if it's not 20, is closer to 20. And if we are going to support 12, I think we need to, I think we need to have a reason for it. So that, that's where I'm sort of coming out on this right now. The other thing I will say is that this doesn't apply so much to this particular project. And, you know, I'm not a fan of kind of imposing ad hoc rules or, or, you know, gotchas on applicants. I do, it, the fact that we've now had two applications in the last few months for projects in the water course overlay has just raised a lot of questions about what those rules really are, what they should be. And I, I know from my professional life that it's not as easy as having a land surveyor go out and say, "Oh, this is where the top of the bank is." It's something that is, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that the Albany Planning Department needs to get into, you know, this level of like hydrogeology that would, would go into some kind of permitting application for activity within a stream. But I do think that it would be really beneficial to applicants and the general public and staff to have a clearer set of guidelines about what does it mean to, to, you know, to measure the top of the bank for purposes of our planning code, and who is qualified to make that decision. And so that, again, is really more of a general comment. It seems here like reasonable assumptions have been made about where the top of the bank is. I don't want to hold up this or any other application on the basis that we should have better rules in place, but I do think it's something that, that we as a city should look at to try to communicate for future applicants who are in the water, water course area. Thanks.
Again?
Good thinking there. A few things that came to my mind was, yeah, I had trouble knowing where the existing trees were, because the survey didn't show any trees or any topography. I was really concerned with the property line and setbacks, but none of the other existing natural features of the site, which, which helped me understand better how sensitive the placement of the architecture was to the existing site. Now, the neighbors, neighbors talked about the existing trees there, and with some comment that they were well past the fence, but Doug said that what he saw, they were closer to the fence. I, I don't quite know. I didn't get a chance to go by the site. I've seen the site in the past.
The canopy spreads, is what she was talking about.
Yeah, I know that, I can see that.
The trunks themselves are very close to the fence. The canopy certainly spreads, yeah.
Thanks. Which brings up the other issue with, with the shade, you know, with this huge canopy there, the neighbor to the north is already getting a lot of shade impact unless the light's coming below. But I, but I think of all the comments, there's, the two that struck a most was the concern for the neighbor to the north who's, will be impacted by that extension into their rear yard, even though currently there is already a lot of shade, but that's a natural shade of tree, maybe it's all soft or light. And the other issue was the impact to the wildlife, which I was very sensitive to, but I find it kind of hard to apply that sensitive, you know, you also have rear yards, and unless you have wildlife-sensitive planting and wildlife-sensitive features, you're not doing much to help, and you can't just impose that on one person who now is inheriting a creek. We, so I think, I'm very sensitive to the fact that the wildlife might be disrupted, and they're using that right now, but that's, you know, it's his right to develop, develop it. But I would like to, if the project goes forward, to push for very, as I said previously, very naturally sensitive landscape, you know, maybe native plants, pollinator species, birdhouses, everything you can do to not disrupt the wildlife, but kind of work with it, you know. Currently on the plan, we have a lot of fences, and we're just kind of pushing the wildlife off. There's no reason, you know, maybe there's security concerns, yes, but the creek is a pretty secure edge, for the most part. So, so the, so the issue of wanting to see more in the landscape plan, to see it developed a little more sensitive way, that's one thing that's bothering me. I can't tell what's there and what's being done. The neighbor to the north, it is in a full 28-foot or 25-foot height. That section adjacent, section of the house adjacent to the property to the north is only 21 feet tall at the peak. It's only, to the eve, it's only about 19 feet, I think, sometimes. So it's not as massive as the rest of the structure, so it steps down a little bit, which is a nice feature. And, and also, as previously stated, yes, it's, it's bigger than maybe some of the houses around it, but at any moment, you could sell your house and somebody could move in, and full legal rights, almost double it, and nobody could say anything. So it's the fact that the house next to it might be 900 square feet or 1,000 square feet, shouldn't say that this one couldn't be much bigger. And it still is not a huge house, so I'm inclined to, to go with it, but I, I would like to push it back and not, probably not vote this time to see if it could be a little bit more sensibly done, if maybe you can get a little more pullback from the neighbors, like was mentioned, 16. It seems doable to me, looking at the footprint. I mean, bedrooms aren't going to be quite as big, but still definitely workable. And maybe there's a way to lower that, that 20, I guess 21-foot eve down a little bit, some, some nuance. So that's kind of where I stand on it.
Great, thanks. Well, I'll just follow it up, reiterating, or I won't reiterate much of what my fellow commissioners would say, but I do generally feel like this, this project can certainly make, at least right now, I would say at least three, if not four, of the variance findings, in my opinion. Certainly, I think that it is a unique site. Things like irregularly shaped lots and sort of naturally occurring forms, things like creeks are very typical of what variances are usually granted for. Sort of preservation of property rights, no special privileges and limitations, I think sort of the intent of those can also be met in that the overall, again, the overall FAR and lot coverage, that the final building size of this lot, I don't think is giving a development right here that can't be obtained on adjacent parcels in this area. So for those reasons, I think there are many things working for it. The one that is, though, holding me up a little bit right now, and I would agree that I think a continuance might, and a little bit more work on this might be the right approach, is the adverse impacts finding, because it does say in this, in this finding that the granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity, specifically talking about privacy, light, and shadowing. I don't feel like we've been given sort of the argument to demonstrate that those things aren't being negatively impacted by the granting of this variance. I do think that once some of the trees are modeled in and shown on the plans, we may very well be able to demonstrate that, that perhaps there's no net new significant shadow by the granting of the variance, or, or a difference in access of light, or, or privacy through sightlines, perhaps the trees already block those sightlines. But right now, I just don't feel like I have sufficient information to be able to affirmatively say that there, you know, there will not be increased impacts on privacy from a code-compliant project to this type of, to this project. So I think, I think taking a continuance, taking a look at maybe some additional drawings that can show things like sightlines and shadows, and that incorporate the landscaping that's there and that will be retained, so that we really do have all of that information to assess, will be really helpful. And I do also agree that, you know, when asking for a variance, it should be sort of the most minimal amount necessary to actually get the program, and I think there's a little bit of wiggle room in the floor plan, certainly on the main floor, and I think in the bedrooms, too, there's a little bit of wiggle room that can be shaved off to pull that, that back, and I think the height also can be dropped. I, I appreciate sort of the tall ceilings that are being sought on the bedroom level, but I think, again, when you're in the world of variance, it's, you don't always get those desirable elements, you know, in the same way that you would in an otherwise code-compliant project. So I think to take a second look at some of those components of the project and see, see what can be done to, to make this, sort of tighten it up, tighten up the floor plan a little bit, and still get a project. I think, you know, what you're clearly hearing here is that the commission sounds like, in general, we're supportive of building a new construction home here and, and building a program that will support sort of a contemporary family-sized house. But I think doing so in a ways that we are very confident that if, at the end of the day, we need to grant a variance, it's absolutely necessary, and we can be confident that it's not causing any kind of unusual impacts on adjacent properties. So that would be sort of, I think, the little bit of marching orders, maybe, that we would give to the project architect to work on the next round. I don't have anything else to add to that, but it sounds like.
It sounds like we're, we're heading toward a continuance. A couple of other, we've had no comments tonight on the design, very few. We went and talked about windows a little bit. I'm, I'm quite happy with the, with the design generally and with the approach that designer has taken. Color, materials, roofing, all of that. I just want to make that for the record, so, to give them some guidance on that. Anyone else have any thoughts on?
Yeah, I was going to say, although we don't have the standard for exceptional design here with the FAR, I do feel like there are the principles that we would be seeking in exceptional design. I think the materiality, you know, the roofing material, the exterior cladding, the windows, and the overall sort of vision that you have, I think, is a very well-designed building. I think it just needs to be rewrapped a little bit.
Okay. And then, another thought, when we were, I started my talk and we were trying to figure out whether I was going to go for it or not, a couple other notes I made here. One is, I would have added a condition of keeping those trees along the back fence, so I'd like to see those trees stay, the mature trees. And I would also have asked for a condition, other commissioners might accept it or not, but I think in a something like this, it would be appropriate to have like a creek management plan that would be reviewed by our staff for this, developed for this site, something along that nature. This is a new, a new development on a vacant lot that has part of our creek on it. We're not going to require a landscape plan. We don't have the, we don't have the .45 FAR to do that. We could, because I'd say we could require or ask for a landscape plan. Why not? What's preventing us from that? But more important to me is a sort of creek management plan so that the homeowners and any future homeowners would have some guidance done by a professional biologist or something like that about, about what is appropriate, about the concerns that Chris has. He's a, he's a biologist, landscape architect. And the idea about how, well, what plants should go on the site that, that are beneficial to the creek environment, what plants should be avoided because they might be invasive, and they might spread, that sort of thing. I think that, I think it'd be appropriate to do that and ask for.
Yeah, being a variance, we could, we couldn't, being that there's requesting a variance, we could ask for a landscape plan.
Why not?
I think it would benefit the project and, in the long run, the client, the owner.
And, and, no, I don't know if the homeowners, the homeowners are probably not professionals in, in the biological fields either, and that would be, serve them well to, they want to live with the creek, and they want to make the creek survive, and they want to, they want to benefit from the creek. And I think that a creek management plan for this site would be, would be a very useful thing for everybody.
If I may speak to that, we have quite a bit of experience with creek management plans on Lower Cordonesus Creek, so if it would be okay with the commission, we could bring you a draft prepared by staff that actually has been prepared by consultants working for us on other reaches of the creek, and it's pretty straightforward. I think it could be translated into a property like this without having the expense of a biologist.
That's great, that's cool.
They are biologists and hydrologists and so forth, and I think we can pull something together that will serve that purpose.
That'd be very useful, I'm sure. Yeah, yeah.
Make a motion to continue.
Yeah, I, I will, but just last comment. So again, I, I also think it's, it's a very nice design and appreciate the, the way that you've tried to make good use of the site. that you've tried to make good use of the site and the orientation of the creek, and I appreciate that even the neighbor who perhaps wants some changes to, to the site acknowledges some of the nice things about the design as well. And I did just want to recognize that I understand that the, at least the owners at the time who were pursuing an application in 2016, did receive feedback from the commission, that the commission was, you know, open to a variance, and potentially more open to a variance than, you know, a cantilever design over the creek. And I just wanted to, again, just acknowledge that, that I don't think there's a, I don't think anyone's trying to pull a, you know, a bait and switch on that feedback, but as you've heard, we do need to make sure that we're supporting all of the findings, and being mindful about how to approach it. So with that, I will move to continue planning application 19037, probably to a date uncertain, and encourage the applicant to work with staff to help refine and, and address some of the things we've talked about tonight.
I'll second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to clarify, a creek management plan is not a landscape plan, two different things.
Yeah, that's correct, right.
Great. Seeing no opposition, then that item is going to be continued to a date unspecified, and we will renotice and hear it at a, at a subsequent date when it's ready to come back. Thank you, everyone, for your public comment. So with that, that item is continued, and that moves us on to item seven on the agenda, which is new business of the commission, item seven dash one, which is our draft climate action and adaptation plan strategies. We'll just...
I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Karad, who is our Civic Spark Climate Fellow. It's a program that we've utilized for the last few years, that brings a young professional into the city to help us on sustainability-related planning and implementation, and Lizzie is going to make a presentation to you on our draft climate action plan this evening.
Thank you, Jeff. Hi, I'm Lizzie Karad. Like Jeff mentioned, I'm the Civic Spark Climate Fellow, so over the last 10 months, I've been working on the update to the climate action and adaptation plan here in Albany, and we'd like to solicit some feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission today regarding some specific measures, as well as general comments about the whole plan. But before we dive into that, I'll give you some background on our planning process and how we got to where we are now. So Albany has greenhouse gas reduction targets of 60%, sorry, 25% by 2020, 60% by 2035, and carbon neutrality by 2050. And based on feedback from our climate action committee and work with our consultants, we're defining carbon neutrality as reducing emissions to as close to zero as possible by 2050, and then at the 2050 mark, any emissions that are still being emitted, we will invest in either carbon sequestering technology or natural landscaping, carbon sequestration to kind of balance that out. And exciting news, we just did an update to our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and we found out that as of last year, after our East Bay community energy opt up to carbon-free electricity throughout the city, we've hit 27% emissions reductions since our 2004 baseline. So we've already surpassed our 2020 goal, and now we're working towards our 2035 goal. So why do we want to pursue climate action in Albany? We've already started experiencing some of the effects of climate change, and we know that more are to come and more intense. So we're, in Albany, we will be experiencing increased extreme weather events, including flooding, rain, and extreme heat like we experienced just a few weeks ago, some sea level rise over by the bulb and along the waterfront, as well as increased risk of wildfire, and also the risk of wildfire in neighboring jurisdictions that then we would feel the smoke exposure from. There are also many co-benefits from local action, including creating a more resilient community and economy, better local air quality, urban beautification, and then also public health and safety improvements. Our planning process kicked off in a, well, many, many months ago, when our climate action committee started talking about doing an update to the climate action plan, but this specific CAP 2.0 work really kicked off in August of 2018 with our initial research that we started with our consultants. And then we kicked off our community engagement portion of the planning process in October of 2018 with a community survey, and the goal of the survey was to get initial reactions to climate action planning and the CAP 2.0 update, as well as some unique ideas from the community to see what they thought a new climate action plan would look like. We were really excited that we got over 300 responses to the survey, and we learned from the results of that survey that there's widespread support throughout Albany to do local climate action planning, and also that the respondents felt that it was not just the city's responsibility and role to tackle climate change, but also, we learned that the community members really wanted to get involved in the process. So I'll get back to the community portion in January, but November through December, we did some internal staff interviews with like Public Works, Community Development, FIRE, and we talked to staff about what went well with our first climate action plan, and what they thought we could improve for the second climate action plan. In January, we held a community workshop in the council chambers, and we had over 60 members of the community come and provide unique solutions to overcoming emission sources, and also climate impacts. And in March, we held four stakeholder meetings. We held a business stakeholder meeting, green infrastructure stakeholder meeting, which, thank you, Chris, for coming to that one. We also held a transportation stakeholder meeting, and then landlords and property owners. And then from all that community engagement and internal staff engagement that we did throughout the year, we created this draft climate action and adaptation plan that is before you now. And right now, we are in the public comment period, which is open through July 19th. So as I mentioned, we're now in the draft phase, and our climate action and adaptation plan has four main strategies for reaching carbon neutrality by 2050. The first strategy is to electrify new and existing buildings. Second strategy is to transition to a low-carbon transportation, which is both public transportation and active transportation, like biking and walking. We would like to shift to a more carbon-free economy, both municipal purchases, as well as encouraging members of our community to be more conscious about their consumption and try to reduce emissions from the consumption side. And also, our fourth measure is accelerate resilience for all, which is more of an adaptation and carbon sequestration component. So we are now in the public review process, which, as I mentioned, will go through July 19th. I'm presenting tonight to your commission. I also will be presenting to the Parks Recreation Open Space Commission. We spoke to the Economic Development Committee. We've been working with the Climate Action Committee, and then I also met with Transportation, Traffic and Safety, and I'm blanking on, oh, Social and Economic Justice Commission. So once we finish this public comment period, we will spend August kind of reviewing all the public comments that we have received, and incorporate it into the plan, as well as work on our implementation plan with our consultants, and then our plan is to bring our final plan to council in October. So I kind of breeze through that. Does anyone have any questions before I move on to the feedback portion? Yes, Doug?
Who's the lead on this whole process? Is it the Climate Action Commission?
Our Climate Action Committee, we've been working with...
Climate Action Committee.
Climate Action Committee, and they meet...
They're the lead commission, then?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So they, typically, we have at least one discussion item about the plan every month, and they meet every third Wednesday. Any other questions? Okay. So I created a suggestion, suggested discussion format, because the previous committees and commissions I've gone to had a lot of public comment, but I don't know what our public comment situation is going to look like tonight, so feel free to adjust this as needed. If we do have anyone come in, I do suggest, based on what I've seen at other committee and commission presentations, if we leave public comment to the end, typically, we get, it moves along a little bit quicker, and then it's easier to get everybody's comments all at once. But first, we'll start with general comments about the whole plan, if anyone has any of those, if you took a look at the plan beforehand, and then we'll move into, I pulled out some measures that we would like to get input from the Planning and Zoning Commission specifically. So I'll first start with those.
You're asking us for general comments?
Yes, about the plan. Also, Doug, thank you, you have a lot of photos in our plan.
Thank you, nice to see them. I love seeing them, man's great.
Yeah, thank you so much, you're very talented.
Old friends, I, oh, look at that.
Yeah.
I have comments, so...
Wonderful.
Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. General comments, page four, "If Not Albany, Who?" I read that, and I wonder if this shouldn't, should this be a message from the city council? Or like, who is we? And that, it sounded like Climate Action Committee, then it should stay so, I think. But it's a nice idea, and the format is, is kind of interesting, but, but it, it's not very governmental, in a sense, like, if the city council is going to adopt this, then it should be a message, then it could be a message from the city council, or something like that, or, or if, if it, someone should take credit for that. I don't know, that's one general comment. Another general comment I had is, let's see. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I need to, I need to understand better, there's so much emphasis in going all-electric in this plan, and I need to understand better how that works. Now, we have the East Bay community, whatever the partnership we have, we see it in our PG&E bills, and I, I wonder, you know, is that really helping, is that really helping the climate? I have trouble figuring that out. How does it occur? It occurs to me that, that there must be a limited pool of renewable energy out there, and all we're doing is, we're just a rich community that's buying off that stuff, and then the non-renewable energy that, you know, we're, we're siphoning demand for renewable energy from poorer communities, say, in the Central Valley or wherever. That's the way it looks to me. And by doing, by going to the East Bay Community Partnership, are we really helping the environment? Or are we just helping make ourselves feel good by saying we're all renewable? And then, and/or, are we putting too much reliance on this, on the success of our plan on that? By saying that we're, we're buying all of our, all of our energy inputs from renewable We're just diverting some of the natural gas-generated power that PG&E prepares, or, or purchases, or that comes off the grid from other states. We're just diverting it, we're, we're siphoning off the cream, in a way. That just, that's the whole thing. I've never understood how it all works, and it's probably very complicated, but...
Can I, can I address that? Well, and Lizzie probably knows way more than I do, but I mean, I think the very big-picture answer is that on a state level, so I, I think it's a, it's a good and interesting observation that, you know, at this moment in time, there is a limited pool of renewable, you know, energy that's being diverted to the grid, and it, you know, it only goes so many places. But the idea being that the overall electrical generating system across the state of California is being mandated by the legislature to become more and more and more renewable, up to the point that it is 100% renewable.
Just change the, change of the goals.
Yeah, they continue to ratchet up the goals, and that has its whole own set of challenges and issues, but the idea being that you want to have the infrastructure in place to then benefit from the, the fact that, at some point in the future, everything that's getting, you know, dumped on the grid is coming from renewable sources. So I, I think it's, it's not so much meant to address this particular moment in time as it is, you know, trying to sync up the systems with where the electricity supply is going across the state in general. That's my view of it.
I certainly understand. I think I understand that, and I think by our saying we want 100% renewal, we're incentivizing everybody, all the other, PG&E and everyone else, to...
Right, it is also, it is also trying to spur the, the demand side of it as well.
And I noticed in the report, I noticed in the report also that PG&E is, what, 17% nuclear now, and I think that's going to be phased out, so maybe this plan should address, you know, I don't, I don't, that, no, I don't know that this plan should address that. I think this should be more of an Albany plan, and what I was worried about is that we're relying so much on, on the state actions of, of the, and the regional actions of the east shore things. The Albany kind of things that I didn't see in the plan, that, that I thought were lacking, were a couple of things. What about encouraging more solar panels? They're not even mentioned in the report, hardly at all. There's only, the thing that I'm being asked to do is to electrify my furnace. Well, I just spent $10,000 three years ago for a whole new high-efficiency natural gas furnace, system, whole system, and, and this plan made me feel, nah, you're really out of it, you're really obsolete, why didn't you buy a heat pump? Why, no one even talked me about a heat pump at the time, it wasn't done. High-efficiency natural gas was the thing to do. This planning commission, we're always saying, well, you should get rid of that fireplace and put in a, put in a gas insert. We all have natural gas into our homes. I think we should be encouraging more people to, to do solar panels. I put in solar panels, and that incentivized me to immediately say, well, maybe I, you know, maybe I should get rid of the hybrid car, and I'll buy an electric car. I did. Now I can run that electric car off the solar panels. That's a terrific incentive. And, and, you know, I'm real, but I got rid of the old gas hot tub, and I put an electric one in. So, so, but I, there, not enough like Albany incentives here. The other thing, another thing I'm, I'm wrestling with, because I also have, am a landlord, small-time landlord, but we, this plan should have some talk about how to encourage landlords on rental properties to go solar. And the only thing I've been able to find is encouragement at the state level and at the local level, is to, you can install solar hot water heater in multifamily residential buildings, you can save a lot, you can cut down on your gas use. But there's nothing in here at all about solar hot water heaters, either residential or multifamily residential. I think the hard nut to crack for multifamily is, if you put solar panels on and everybody's individually metered, how do you make that work out? And that's something that I think should be in our climate action plan. We should have some, something in Albany's climate action plan that maybe other cities have put together to sort of help our multifamily properties become more energy efficient. And God knows, some of those multifamily apartments have, places have huge roof surfaces, perfect for solar. And I see them around town, but they're not going solar. And that's what I was looking at in the overall big-picture thing, so. So, and then, there's a lot in here about encouraging more bicycling and, what do you call it, active transportation. And, and that's good, but I bet that that is going to reduce, you know, our greenhouse gas emissions by less than 1%. It's small, and, and, you know, and United States is still, America, Albany is still going to be predominantly auto-oriented, most of our trips by far. I mean, maybe we should have a goal in here and say that our active transportation should increase from the current mode split of, say, whatever it is, 4% to 5%. That would be a, that'd be a good goal, and then that would, and that would encourage all kinds, or could encourage, and be a measurable goal, all kinds of improvements in bicycle, in bicycling and all of that. A little bit of mention of what's happening now with electrification of scooters and electric bicycles. I think there's a lot of change going on in that area right now. It's probably for the good, and, and we probably can't keep up with it as fast as it'll happen, but, and that's mentioned in the plan. I don't think it's a criticism, I think that is talked about. But that being said... But that being said, on the other side of that coin, I'm worried about what the popularity of Uber and Lyft is doing for, has negative greenhouse gas consequences for us. And that's not addressed. And I don't know if it can be, but I, I think, I, I don't know if regional vehicle miles traveled is increasing because of Uber and Lyft. I know congestion in downtown San Francisco is, that's been reported. And so there are some headwinds. I'd say, you know, getting rid of nuclear power for doing that, the rise of ride sharing is our headwinds that we'd have to overcome if we're going to reach these goals as well. And I'd like to see them addressed in the plan in some way as, as that. You know, it isn't all going to be all rosy, but there are going to be bumps in the road. And that's all I can think of right now, so.
Thank you.
You know, off the top of my head, that's, and comments on the overall plan, I guess.
Any other, want to go?
I've got a couple of things. I also liked the first letter. I think Doug's comment about having it come from somebody or somebody in particular is really good. But I do, first thing you, first thing you think when you pick it up is like, what can Albany do to change this? You know, so you address that right away. That's really good. A couple of things, I found that some of the wording and some of the language was, was kind of generic to any community, not specific, I think a little bit. And especially so on the Albany, our vision, Albany 2050. Is this something we wrote for, for this plan or is it something? It's some of the, just little tweaking, and I'm probably not the person to do this kind of tweaking. But for instance, under, one of the statements says plentiful local green jobs that employ and serve underrepresented, underrepresented, underserved communities are the norm. Well, if they're constantly served, it's no longer, I mean, it's, just take off are the norm, you know, it just seems funny, like we're assuming that we're always going to have underserved, underrepresented communities that we have to take care of. I think the goal is we don't have that in the future. So some of these are, like equity, let's see, one of, here's another one. Equity drives our sustainability. Initiatives are developed in collaboration with our communities of color, low-income populations and other vulnerable groups. That's definitely an issue in many communities. Albany is very homogeneous, especially economically. We don't have, so maybe the wording could be a little better, more geared to Albany, make sure it's inclusive, of course, in all people. We want everybody to participate. That's written more like a large community with real extremes. And I don't see Albany has that as much. A lot of terminology, locally sourced renewable energies and locally sourced this and that. Was, I guess that would mean solar panels? All right. So that, that kind of feeds in what Doug was saying. And that's really where, the rest of it was, it was plain and documented. It's large statements that have yet to be refined as we go down the process.
So I think this is a really good draft and I want to say that before anything else. I think, you know, this obviously reflects a lot of work and a lot of creative thinking and clearly a lot of input from the community and different stakeholder groups. And, you know, overall, I think this is all acknowledging the challenges in, you know, taking this lofty goal of getting to carbon neutrality and trying to turn that into a reality. I think this does a really good job of trying to balance the considerations involved in that. And I appreciate that, you know, you're looking at various metrics, right? Like not just how much would this reduce, but also how politically feasible is it and how much would it cost and that kind of thing. So I think those are all really positive features of this plan. I think just a couple of high-level comments. One is that, you know, I noticed that the, the sector that is, that continues to be responsible for most emissions is transportation. And, you know, there are various things that go into that, but, you know, the single passenger vehicles is a huge part of it. And it was also the highest priority in the, it looks like in the survey responses you got, as, you know, addressing transportation sector emissions should be the highest priority. And then I didn't quite feel like that sense of magnitude and priority was really reflected in the action items, which focused much more on the electrification issue. And I thought that, and I know that they're not totally unrelated, right? I know there's going to be a move to more electric vehicle use and so that is, that's certainly a part of it. But it's like the, the big conundrum is how do you get people to stop driving their damn cars so much? And I thought that if that's, if that's a big part of what we need to tackle in the short and medium term, then the measures in here seemed a little anemic to get to that goal. So it's really, really hard and I don't know what the answer is. But it does seem that the, the first mile, last mile transportation issue in Albany is a big one. Like people, not that many people who live in Albany actually work in Albany, were, you know, traveling to the city or the South Bay or whatever. And even if BART is great for, or the TransBay bus even is, is great for like 90% of that trip, there's always the, you know, well, how do you get from your house to BART? Like I can't reasonably walk to BART and the, you know, it's, I've always thought it would be just fantastic if there was a shuttle. And I know that is one of the things that you're talking about considering in here. But I think that's, to me, that seems like a higher priority of like really tackling the, the first mile, last mile problem head-on, seems like it should be a really, a high priority of this. And I think getting people to ferry service should be a component of that as well. Because I know there's now the one in Richmond and Berkeley is looking at starting, you know, public ferry service again. And I think that's going to be a big part of the regional transportation network.
Energy.
Yeah, no, that's true. It is. But then when you offset it against how many car trips it's preventing, I don't know. I actually don't know how that compares. But, but I think even just from a traffic perspective and not even thinking about the environment, it's a big priority for the regional transportation agencies to emphasize ferry right now. And so it would be fantastic if Albany could play a part in helping getting people to those, those ferries. So that's one overall issue. Another one is that, so I totally understand that the school district is a separate entity and the city of Albany doesn't control the school district. But it does seem to me like you can't really talk about the, the overall city reducing its emissions so aggressively if we don't talk about the school district. And so I would like to see that explored a little more. You know, just from my observations as a parent, the school district does a lot of things really well, but I think there's lots of room for improvement in operations and food service and waste management and whatnot. And so I think looking for ways to collaborate with the district and help provide resources and incentivize, you know, act, the school district actively engaging with these issues would be a huge benefit as well. So I'll, I'll just leave it at that. But again, I think it's a really strong product overall.
Mr. Kent, did you have any comments?
No, that was.
Okay. I didn't, I don't have a whole lot to add. I agree as somebody who commutes to the city every day, I do think the, getting us out of our cars and finding that first mile, last mile is really critical. And I think it's something very pragmatic and it would be, I think, also just a great asset to the city of Albany if we could find sort of a unique solution here that both was an amenity to our residents, but also really supported our, our climate goals. The one comment that I have is, yeah, so I, on that point first, before I wrap that up, I think the shuttle comment is actually a really innovative one and I was really excited to see that that was in there. So I think that's something that a lot of other communities don't, don't have. On the section that talked about strategy one, electrifier buildings, the two, the only two bullets that were listed under goals, and this is on page 32, were to eliminate natural gas from new construction and eliminate natural gas in existing buildings. And although I totally understand the point of that and why we would have those lofty goals, there's sort of the pragmatic part of me also that thinks about we're, you know, the city of Albany in terms of our commercial buildings, our restaurant industry is a big part of who we are and a big part of our economic engine. And similarly on the residential side, we have a lot of foodies that live in this town that love to cook on nice gas stoves. And I just don't want us to be sort of naive and, you know, assume that someday everyone will just not care about that at all and make those sacrifices. So, and there may be solutions that I'm just not aware of out there, but I do think that's something that we should be cognizant of, both in our commercial sector for our restaurants in town and within our residential buildings, to just think that through a little bit more. Because I don't think it's terribly realistic right now to expect everyone gets rid of their lovely Viking stoves that they've put into their remodeled kitchens.
I agree. I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah.
But it raises the question, the point, and that is we, our natural gas infrastructure in Albany is totally built up, totally built up. And it functions, it functions pretty well, I think, very well. And so why would we want to say in our own climate action plan, we want to get rid of it? Is it, is it that? Is there, is something, is something wrong there? That's not an incremental sort of step. That's a pretty radical thing to do, I think, you know.
I think, I think to my point, I think there are probably a lot of other things where we can get bang for their back, bang for our buck. And I do think there are things, like for example, the, the tankless water heaters and there are things that could get incorporated into building code that there's not sort of the same degree of, you don't have to sort of convince people quite to the same degree to make lifestyle changes. And so they're almost easier victories that seem like things that can be more on the near term and a little less painful of changes.
Yeah, and I also, I mean, I had the same reaction on gas and, you know, so we're doing a big house project right now and we just had to buy all new appliances. And I like, I thought about, I mean, I know that this is an issue and I'm like, God, I cannot buy electric, an electric stove. So I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed to admit that. But it's like, I think it's a very emotional issue for a lot of people. And it's something that maybe isn't that rational based on today's like electric technology, right? Like it's a lot different than your mom's like coiled burners. And I, I know that rationally, but I do think that that kind of, but it does, it does feel like an emotional issue. And people feel very attached to their, people feel very attached to their natural gas burners. And if the goal, oh, that's my Fitbit going off. I'm gesticulating. Sorry. If the, if the goal is, so I'm not saying it's not an important goal to get there eventually, but I do think it's going to be a long process. It's going to require phasing in. And I think a lot of it is going to be like helping meet people where they're at right now and slowly bring people along, you know, and a lot of that will be based on what the technology is, not just this, natural gas is bad for global warming, which we can all grasp intellectually, but also you won't be making a big, you know, I know that all sounds very selfish, but it's, I do think it's a challenge to overcome in this.
And one thing that I think might even be helpful when you're talking about, like specifically in this section about electrifying buildings, is to almost do sort of a, like some sort of a layman's pamphlet that talks about the different types of appliances that you might have for your home, where you have an option of an electric version or a gas version and to maybe show like what the benefits are, you know. I personally don't have a strong opinion about my dryer, right? Whether it's gas or electric. And, you know, to be able to at least see that, hey, maybe nine out of the 10 appliances in my house, I'm choosing electric, but on this one, I'm going to be selfish and emotional and not rational and go with something different. But at least to like give people those sort of educated options to see what the impact of adding solar panels would do and what kind of offset that provides. I think to sort of be able to break it down in your building about, yeah, where those benefits are and, and to make those educated decisions accordingly. Because I think a lot of people probably are not aware of what those actual benefits or negatives are from the different products. But anyhow, other than that, I didn't really have any additional comments. I think this is a great draft and I'm.
I have, I realize I didn't have all my sheets here. Ran out of the office with only half the pack. I was wondering, I thought it was kind of like.
Short plan.
There was the whole tree, the tree master plan issue, which was in there, which I think is great, but I, there's nothing, currently there's no protection of trees on private property. The city doesn't care anything about trees on private property, where a lot of cities do. And I think we could do more. You know, if someone really needs to take a tree down to build a house, yes, but if it's a significant tree, certain species, certain size, maybe a little more thought needs to go through and maybe a permit required. So it's not just done at a whim.
You say in your slide, you weren't interested in some planning and zoning specific comments, then? I have a couple.
Are you ready to move on to the specific measures?
That's the next part? Oh, okay.
And I'll just say, if you have any other general measures, general, general comments, I have my email address on the last slide. And feel free to email me any of those comments, additional comments you may have.
Okay.
So our first two measures, we'd like to pull out of our transportation and zoning measures, which are amend the zoning ordinance to allow higher density development and then also introduce a unit parking swap program for developers. If you have any comments on those?
Yes, that 218, that was one I highlighted. Let's see. We're doing a lot with respect to parking and for all zoning districts and then the state's doing it for us with ADUs. Do we have, I mean, maybe this policy should reflect what we already have. I mean, we have the ability. I don't understand this policy and it doesn't, it need, I think it should be put in, in planning and zoning language, or we should rewrite this policy so that it, it fits with what, with what we're doing in our, in our multi-mixed use districts, anywhere, what we can do, so.
Yeah, and that was sort of my comment for both 2.17 and 2.18. So for 2.18, I feel like our ADU program effectively already does that, because you can add an ADU without parking.
Yeah.
So I feel like that's, unless there's a different intent from this that maybe we're not understanding, but I feel like that kind of already exists and is mandated at the state level.
It's done.
Yeah. And then for 2.1.7, although I understand sort of the first aspect of increasing building heights, the sort of second part of that of allowing projects to build out to their densities and allowing mixed land use, I guess I'm also a little perplexed on that. So I feel like generally speaking, we're not constraining permissible densities right now. If a property is allowed to build to a certain density and it's otherwise code compliant, I feel like we are typically supportive of that density. So I don't think there's necessarily that issue that needs to be called out right now. And we already have mixed land use zoning classifications throughout the city. And so again, I don't know if the idea is to sort of open up our solely residentially zone districts to be mixed, mixed use or, or what, but.
Yeah, and I, I read the intent of this to be, we should be looking to increase allowable densities, at least in certain zoning districts. It's not worded that way, but that's kind of where I thought the intent was going. And I do think that's something that should be explored and certainly for, you know, sequo purposes, the city can't commit to increasing densities throughout the city until it actually, you know, until you actually look at that and do the analysis. But I think having a policy goal of, you know, considering areas where higher, increasing the density limits would be appropriate, I, I think that's, you know, I certainly would be open to that idea.
Maybe I can clarify a little bit. We've talked a lot about these. And I think on 2.1.7, the way our zoning ordinance has, has been written, well, our general plan, let's say on San Pablo Avenue, has a density cap of 63 units per acre. If you, if you look through the zoning ordinance and you comply with everything in the zoning ordinance, you're probably only going to be able to build. ordinance, you're probably only going to be able to build to maybe 30 or 40 units an acre. Because you've got, you've, you've done a lot of work in the planning area, but there are still things about daylight planes and setbacks and ground floor retail and open space requirements. And so I think the idea of 2.1.7 is, is mostly to consider modifications or to revisit those modifications, those restrictions in the code that limit us to less than what we actually have in our general plan. And the state may impose that on us anyhow. There's been one of the dozens of pieces of legislation that I've lost track of the status of, but some of them have talked about, you have to let people build to your general plan density. So this, this gets to that. You're right, if we say, oh, instead of going to 63 units an acre, go to 100 units an acre or something like that, that's a whole nother ballgame that, that, that may not be appropriate for the scale of Albany right now.
So 63 units an acre, that's, that's about five stories? Is that kind of the range?
Yeah, I think probably five stories if it were just kind of building out of sight. I think you probably, we're actually going to be working on that analysis over the next few months as part of the SB 2 grant that we'll be getting, so we'll be able to answer that question more specifically. But yeah, I think that's probably a rectangular building to, to five stories would get you to 63 units plus or minus.
Any other comments on these two? Also, thank you for clarifying, Jeff. I am new to the planning world, so I sometimes get confused too. Any other comments on these two? Okay, transportation measure. Adopt an EV charging planning code amendment that would increase the charging requirements for new construction and renovations.
So the only comment I had on this, just because I actually was working on something similar to this in San Francisco, was that our deliberations, or at least that this maybe more appropriately should live in the building code, not in the planning code, seems a little more tied to sort of electric, sort of electric standards and about where you put sort of a 220 volt outlet. Because sometimes it's as simple as that. You don't necessarily need to do much more than that. You just need to be electrified in the right places. So I'm not sure this is really appropriate for a planning code. You know, I don't think you can mandate people to use chargers and it feels a little weird in planning to mandate sort of a certain spacing of outlets. So I, I'm very supportive of concept, I just don't know if the planning code's the right home for it. But again, I'm not as familiar in Albany of how the, how the codes are differentiated between, if there's a local building code, it could be amended.
Oh, I was also just curious because this refers to the number of EV chargers publicly available. And so I don't, I wasn't clear if the intent here was to focus on charging requirements for, you know, individual homes or if we're really talking about something that would be, you know, publicly accessible. So I think trying to clarify that one way or another.
It doesn't seem appropriate that if it's private property that you would allow public access on your site, so.
We're working with an engineering firm to electrify California, so, and we are doing these little landscape treatments to Walmart and Target parking lots all across the state. And it's unbelievable how many barriers there are to doing a simple installation of electric vehicle in a parking lot, like a Walnut parking lot in San Dimas or something. They throw the book at you with every, and it takes them months to go through and, you know, thousands of dollars just to put this, to take two parking stalls away and turn them into charging stations. I don't, I would think that, I don't see Albany has, I think a lot of it comes down to landscape codes, which Albany doesn't have a strong one. But I think we'd want to some way make it easy for people to do rather than hard. It's like, I am, if someone or two would say up at Safeway, safer to choose two of those stalls and put in a charging station, it's already built, they have to come back and get a permit through the city, how complex is that to do? Is that a?
If it, I don't think it would be particularly complex. The only one that I can think of off the top of my head that's been installed in Albany is behind.
Little Star Pizza?
Little Star and Post Office. And that, you know, I didn't even know that permit was being issued. It just wasn't an issue. It went through without a, without a hitch.
So the, I mean, the only thing, just, we had one in San Francisco at a Safeway, I think in the Fillmore that came through, and the one issue we had is the parking spaces they were wanting to take away were right on the sidewalk. And they were putting up this huge, basically fenced in enclosure right on the sidewalk. And so it wasn't just like the installations, but it was effectively what felt like a huge box and sort of screening off of the right of way, which was a concern. And I could see like at the Safeway site, and I don't think there are too many sites like that in Albany where it would be concerning, but at the Safeway, I don't think we would want to see a huge screening off right at the sidewalk of sort of big enclosed fenced off areas for equipment, for example. And so I think that would be the only kind of consideration.
Yeah, I think the screening is the big one. For instance, in Half Moon Bay, it was within 100 feet of the shoreline, they had to do a shoreline plan, they had to redo the irrigation, and all of a sudden they had to reroute all the accessibility side, you know, it would just expand it out and became a, you know, $30,000 project just, just for the permit. Not, not the installation, not our, not our fee, but everybody's fee. It doesn't apply here, just, it's just, speaking from experience of what other communities.
We will be bringing back to the commission, since you're our best resource for this, a look at the upcoming building codes. We haven't actually gotten them yet, but when we do and get a chance to review them, we'll be bringing those to you. And we think there's going to be some pretty significant changes in electrification. You'll have plenty of time to have that conversation, continue that conversation. But also there'll be some changes in EV charging requirements in different types of buildings. And then there are a variety of proposals being developed for REACH codes that would help us implement these, these goals that are in this plan. And we want to be able to show you some of those REACH codes that, that are being prepared by various organizations. EBCE is one of them. We were on the phone with them a couple hours ago talking about it. So probably in September or October, you'll have a much longer, a detailed opportunity to dive into, to both EV charging and building electrification.
Cool.
Interesting, yeah.
Any other comments on this measure? Okay. As Jeff just mentioned, talking about REACH codes, adopt regulations to require all electric buildings for new construction and major remodels and redevelopment.
I feel like I already talked this one to death, though.
Yeah. I think we've had, I, I'm not sure I'm in favor of that. And I think for some of the reasons we stated. What about restaurants? What about our existing gas distribution infrastructure that's all in place? Do we want to abandon that at this point? So.
I'm generally in favor of this. If it's specifically for new construction, I'm not sure I'm there on retrofits. If it has a long phase in period, or maybe different, you know, compliance milestones, so it's not all at once. And if there are exceptions that can be granted for particular reasons. So I think it's going to be, it's going to be really difficult, especially in this near term timeframe, to kind of have an all or nothing approach to it. So I, I am in favor of the intent of this measure, but think it needs to be moderated to prevent total freak out. And because there are real, I do think that the, you know, existing infrastructure is a real issue, and I'm, I'm not sure that it makes sense to, you know, just pivot completely away from that.
Yeah, I would definitely just.
And I, I put another, another house sign on mic, I noticed here, because I think it'd be more expensive for the homeowners when you were talking about, because the language here did talk about major retrofits and that, you know, that's going to cost our, our homeowners a lot, the ones that are affected.
Okay. And I'll say, we are looking at doing a phased approach, and one of the other measures that I didn't pull out is like specifically searching for incentives we can provide before we switch over to any kind of mandates. Any more comments on this one? All right. 1.2.8, partner with EBCE to research feasibility of requiring electric panel upgrades during major retrofits. 1.2.10, identify a pathway for requiring all electric energy in existing and new buildings. So that's kind of a, piggyback off the last one, which is like, I should say probably long term. That's after we've done 1.1.1.
I have a question on 1.2.8. Isn't that already a requirement with a certain size of remodel that you have to upgrade your electric panel?
As a practical matter, often, yeah. If you're redoing your kitchen and you have a 50-year-old electric panel, you're probably doing something like that. But it's, it's, you know, if you're redoing your kitchen, we might not say, well, you need to make sure you're going to be able to recharge your car, you know, think about the running a 220 to your garage. We wouldn't necessarily require that. It's, it's something that hopefully people would think about, but they don't have to.
The one little semantic thing I would just make on this is, I feel like in our vocabulary, the term retrofit, I think about seismic retrofits rather than like a remodel. And I think probably the intent here is for like a remodel or a renovation, not a seismic retrofit.
So, did you mention the state is pushing towards all electric, right? That's kind of what their goal is in the future? The green building guidelines are pushing electric more and more?
Well, there's, I would say it's more, the activist community is pushing for all electric. I think state agencies are going a little slower than, you know, there are, there are high level plans, like this is a high level plan for the city, there are high level plans at the state level that talk about similar rates of reduction in generation greenhouse gases. But when you get to the, the nuts and bolts of the California Energy Commission or the Building Standards Commission, they're probably not, they're not pushing it right now as much as some people would like them to push.
Just seemed if, if it does, you know, we're building new homes and you put gas in there and then the state's coming with electric, everybody's going to change out all this stuff. And it's, maybe we're getting ahead of the curve would be good.
I think that gets to a really important issue, you know, down the line, when do we make people, it's one thing to say, okay, your water heater died and maybe in 2019, it's not practical to put in an electric water heater, but in five or 10 years, it may very well be practical to do that and be cost effective. And this is a policy document that sets us up to do that. It's not, it's a whole nother thing to say to somebody, okay, you, whether your water heater is working fine, just fine or not, we're going to make you change that in a few years. And that certainly is a more aggressive approach to things. And I think we're, we see this as a long-term plan, so we want to capture the, if people are making decisions now and they're going to put in a new laundry room, yeah, do think about putting in an electric dryer instead of a gas dryer. But it's, it's an incremental progress towards a long-term goal.
I would just say as a follow-up to that, generally speaking, I mean, I think there is inherent greenness and sort of existing stuff that we all have. And if things aren't broken and are still working and somebody isn't intending to change it out, I certainly don't think that we should take a direction to be making people do things when they weren't otherwise planning on making changes. I don't know. I don't know if that level of detail is getting worked into the plan, but I think existing infrastructure has some greenness inherently in it.
Thank you. Any other comments on these two? This is from our Transition to a Carbon-Free Economy section, partner with regional entities to encourage, to encourage carbon smart building materials through contractor education and financial incentives.
That seems good.
Could you go back one, two? I'm still stuck on the thing there. I noticed there, the approach is mandate fuel switching. I don't know that we want to, I think, I don't know, I don't know that I agree with that. And I, I think that our comments should say that, you know, I don't agree with, I don't know, don't know that I do agree with that. And then the, the policy is identify a pathway. That's much more reasonable. But I don't want to be mandated.
Something about like incentivize fuel switching.
You know, I don't know what time, what, what year it'll be, but I don't want to be mandated now to switch, that's for sure. Anyway.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Any comments on 3.2.4?
Partner with regional, encourage carbon smart. Nope. Nope.
Those are all the ones that I pulled out. So as I mentioned, this is my email address. If you have any other comments.
Can I give you a couple more little thoughts here? Maybe add in some? Okay, on, I have this here, let's see, this would be on beneath, under, underneath 1.2.11. The, that one was coordinate broader elect, with broader efforts to spur electrification. My comments related to, how about Title 24 building code changes? Where does that come in here? I mean, if, if you, does Albany want to be encouraging changes in Title 24? Ian is not here tonight, but he's talked about that in the past. I remember that here about, if you're going to go to heat pumps, it's, it's harder to meet your Title 24 building calculations, and that's one of the issues with heat pumps. But he does it. He loves heat pumps and he knows how to do it. And then the other one, this is where I would have put some material in here, I think somewhere about solar hot water heating and multifamily, especially in multifamily buildings, where I think it can really be a real good thing. And then, we caught that one. Let me see if I have, I think I have a couple more dog ear things here. On 3.2.5, the policy called for establishing a farmer's market. We did that and it didn't work. And we have El Cerrito Farmer's Market and the Kensington Farmer's Market within walking distance. I'm not sure that we need to have this in our cap. I don't think there'd be much benefit from it. I'd strike it. That was an experiment that, you know, on Solano, didn't work for us in Solano. I know some people think they might be able to make it work, but I don't know. On 4.2.6, there's a policy at work with FEMA and the City of Berkeley to update flood zone maps. I say, what about El Cerrito and Contra Costa County? I don't know if that affects any of our inhabited areas. It affects the north side of Albany Hill, I know. Check that. It may not affect, you know, the inhabited areas, so it may not be an issue. And then, and then I had a couple of things here. This is on educate the community on green infrastructure improvements. And I would have a policy having, relating to design and build new rain gardens or infiltration retention basins to reduce flood hazards and increase, increase greening. And then related to that, implement 501(c)(3) requirements for all non-exempt new development. That's the, and I think that's, that happens, that's going to happen anyway. You don't need, that doesn't need to be a policy in here, but maybe it should be acknowledged in here. Those, those require capture and treatment of runoff.
I mean, what we could do is require it on street projects.
On what?
Require it on street projects. And I think right now it's just required for private development, but roadways are exempt.
Uh huh.
And that's where most of the pollution comes from.
That's true.
Is that correct?
New street projects, I don't know.
There's a distinction between street maintenance and street reconstruction. And I can't remember exactly where they define the difference, but if you, if you just start doing a normal pavement project, it doesn't, it does not trigger the (c)(3) requirements, but it, and that's normally what we do. But having said that, when we do planning for bigger types of things, we do talk about and think about green infrastructure already. So we've done some complete street studies for, for San Pablo Avenue. We had a green infrastructure component there. We're working on Solano Avenue. We have green infrastructure components in that plan as well.
It was included in the Solano Avenue Complete Streets.
Yes.
Yeah. And it wasn't included Marin because it was, it was just paving or?
Well, that and we didn't have an extra inch. Well, that and we didn't have an extra inch. We were, we were squeezing in the bike lane and moving utility lines around and undergrounding all the utility lines so that it was, it was already pretty tight. So I, I don't think they were able to accommodate any, there's certainly no significant green infrastructure in that project.
Just so many ways we can tie stormwater and the trees and all that together, which we haven't done, but all right.
Any other comments at this point?
Thank you. And if you do have more comments, you can email me.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. That takes us on to item 7.2 on the agenda, the Association of Bay Area Government's MTC Plan Development Area Update.
Yeah, I think this can be a quick agenda item when this was originally envisioned to be on your agenda. I thought and hoped we would have actually more information to share with you than what we do. We are planning to go to the city council next Monday to give them an update and thought it would be good if you wanted to make any particular recommendation. I gave you a pretty detailed presentation last month. And the only new information that we've received since that presentation is the, the format of the letter that we're supposed to, that I'm supposed to send. And it, it's pretty simple. Where's my mouse? So if you'll recall, just to, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Olson, I just realized earlier this evening that you weren't at the last presentation. I don't know if you're familiar with this. But basically we're, as part of the, the Plan Bay Area update that's beginning and part of the preparation of the new regional housing needs assessment that will be coming out over the next few years, ABAG MTC is requiring cities to review their planned development areas and in some cases requiring us to commit to making amendments to our planned development areas. And we're one, our, our planned development area is, is one. It's the combination of Solano Avenue and San Pablo Avenue. And we combine them into one in order to get close to their acreage target for, for PDAs, which was 100 acres. And I think we're at 80 something acres. So anyhow, the, this is information we just got a few days ago of, of the form of the letter that we're supposed to send. And it's much simpler than what I anticipated. The basic names and information. And then basically filling out this section of the table to say what we're going to do and when we think we're going to do it. And at this level, it's, it's hard to, it's not making any formal sort of commitment, but I think we're probably, it's either a specific plan, a new specific plan or amending other plans such as a general plan and some sort of new sequo review. I'm not sure that it's an EIR. And then amending our zoning ordinance. And all of these things are, are things that we would propose doing in the next several years down the line. And to, again, refresh your memory, I have a timeline that I showed you last time.
Two.
And. Just blow it up. So where we are now is the first dot, which is submitting a letter of interest. I'm required to submit this by September 15th and I want to get this to city council this month so that we're not rushed at the end. We are going to get 100, with respect to the second point there, we are going to get $160,000 from the state housing and community development department to implement zoning changes and general plan changes to help facilitate the development or of, an approval of housing. And we're working with Jeanne Iceberg to make a proposal, have a, have a contract with her to do some refinements to our zoning ordinance and also prepare some objective design guidelines, which are now required by state law and something that we're, we're anxious to get completed. That's something we want to work on this year and maybe early into next year. The Plan Bay Area and the RENA allocations will come out in the 2020 and 2021 timeframes. And we'll, we'll, that RENA number is, is the critical number that we don't know, that we need to know in order to figure out what we need to do next to comply with a new housing element, which is going to be due at the end of 2022. And what I'm recommending is we, we commit to doing a PDA amendment, but we wait to start that PDA amendment until we take care of these other things first. We finish our housing element, we know what our allocation is, and then we go back and do any additional amendments, like I said, to the specific plan or to the general plan or to the zoning ordinance or to some sort of sequo review to kind of wrap it all up in a bow. And it fits into the timeline that they're looking for. They want a commitment by 2025 to make these amendments to the PDA. So it, it all kind of plays out pretty well, actually. It's a little uncomfortable to me making a commitment in 2019 to do something in 2024, but that's, that's kind of the way it's been set up for us. So again, sorry, I don't have as much new information as I had hoped, but we will be going to city council and if there's anything you wanted to make a recommendation or, or anything you wanted to commit, communicate to, to council for their meeting next Monday night, I'd be happy to, to convey that. And then Commissioner Jennings, you asked a question last time and I, you said you ask every time and, and I never have the number every time, so I, this time I did it, which is how we're doing on our arena allocation.
I only ask so I can stump you.
Well, you have to ask then. Our arena allocation was 235 units and we're 215 units into that.
Pretty good.
So it's pretty good, but that's almost all moderate and above moderate housing. Nothing in the very low income and the low income, which is kind of the most critical need in, in the region. So, there you go. I was ready for your question.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any questions or take any feedback.
I mean, I don't have anything to add other than what we said last time. I think the area that we're planning is the right area and get the ball rolling on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, finish up item 7.2. That takes us on to item eight. There are, it looks like no announcements or communications on the agenda.
Oh, I think there is the appeal of what 11.
Oh, the city council upheld the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision on the project, just FYI. So they will hopefully be submitting for building permit soon.
It was unanimous, right?
It was unanimous.
Sorry, I missed that.
I went to the meeting and I spoke and then I left after. I don't know how it came out. I assumed that they were.
Yeah, this was for 1115 Nielsen Street, the legal non-conforming.
They were, okay, they, and they were denied the appeal.
They denied the appeal, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Great, then item nine on the agenda, next meeting is July 24th and that looks like it's the last meeting until September 4th. So with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay.